Ten o'clock, we will call this meeting to order. Maybe? She's about to sit.
You should be late.
I'm standing by the buzzer. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal. Good morning. Welcome to the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today is June 18th, May 25. This meeting is a public forum with a call-in option provided. The meeting is being video and audio recorded with minutes taken, and our meetings are also livestreamed. If you wish to speak to the board, please come to the podium, say your name and address for the record, and please keep your comments at three minutes. Please share if you are speaking on the behalf of others. Are there any words, recognitions, or correspondence?
I do not.
I have none.
Thank you.
Was there, I thought you had a letter, did, was that none?
I, I don't have a letter, no.
Okay, I do have some correspondence. It says, hey Cindy, Ron Kilmer here. I just wanted to take a moment to sing the praises of Chip Zesson and Chad Nibroski. Harris Park is an amazing destination for camping. To call it park-like is doing it a grave injustice. Chip and Chad have labored to create an inviting, relaxing, and beautiful destination. I cannot express enough how much Laura and I love coming here to camp. It is truly my number one choice when we want to get away for a quick, relaxing RV trip. We've camped in locations all over the western region, Oregon, Idaho, Washington, Utah, Nevada. Are there fancier parks with more features? Sure, but none of them can touch the beauty and relaxation we experience here. And at $35 a night is dirt cheap for what we get. We love it so much that Laura made it a location for our family reunion this year. As I sit here typing this, there's another entity using Widener code for their group gathering. So for what it's worth, please know, in the opinion of Laura and myself, Chip and Chad deserve a round of applause and a hearty pat on the back for the effort they've put into creating and maintaining a beautiful destination. Kudos to Yumitilla County for making this destination available to the general public. Ron and Laura Kilmer, West Richland, Washington. So I thought that was really nice, and I know that to get into Harris Park sometimes is, it's a trick because it's becoming so popular. So anyway, it is beautiful up there, and I just wanted to share that with everyone.
No, he moved to West Richland.
Yep, West, West Richland. Any more correspondence? All right, approval of minutes of previous meeting.
I move to approve the minutes of June 4th, 2025.
Second.
Second in all, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Are there any additions to the agenda?
Hope not. Pretty lengthy.
Okay, public input and recognition of visitors. All right, we'll go ahead and start with our business items. Whitney reconsideration. And we are going to move out of a regular meeting into a public hearing. The meeting is now open to the floor for public comment on the Whitney reconsideration. Please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record before commenting. Then keep comments to three minutes.
Staff report first. So Megan Dotchessy, Planning Division Manager for the county. This is a, has already been before the board, and the applicant is requesting that Yumitilla County reconsider the previously adopted tax amendment T-094-24 and supporting findings of fact following the filing of an appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals. Yumitilla County previously adopted a permit path and extensive criteria for establishing commercial gatherings and weddings as a home occupation in the exclusive farm use zone. The applicant requests to amend UCDC 152617H to allow for a subsection of home occupations post-commercial gatherings and weddings by codifying the recently implemented change in OAR Oregon Administrative Rules 660/33, subsection 13014C that took effect January 1st, 2025. Two notices of intent to appeal to Luba were filed on April 11th, 2025 by 1,000 Friends of Oregon, identified as Luba numbers 2025-028 and 2025-029. The applicant later filed a motion to consolidate, which was granted. Subsequently, Jim Whitney, the applicant, and Central Oregon Land Watch filed motions to intervene. On May 1st, 2025, Yumitilla County filed a notice of withdrawal for reconsideration to amend the decision. The criteria of approval for amendments are found in Yumitilla County Development Code, section 152750 to 152755. Applicable statewide planning goals 1 through 14 have also been evaluated. Oregon Administrative Rule 660/33, subsection 13014C is also applicable and is proposed for codification into our development code. Notice went out to DLCD as required on May 13th, 2025. Notice of the reconsideration was also mailed to previous hearing participants and agencies on May 29th, 2025. Notice that the hearing today was published in the East Argonian on June 4th, 2025. In conclusion, the board has the authority to reconsider the previously adopted ordinance 2025-03 and findings of fact and conclusion of law to adopt the newly proposed language in Oregon Administrative Rules 660/33, subsection 13014C, as proposed by the applicant. And the decision made by the board is final unless timely appealed to the Land Use Board of Appeals. And that concludes my staff report. I did receive one comment letter yesterday afternoon that was shared with the board this morning. It was from 1,000 Friends of Oregon and should be entered into the record as exhibit.
Thank you, Megan. We're gonna back up just a little bit, and I already called the hearing to order, and I'm gonna read the opening statement. Ladies and gentlemen, I call this land use hearing before the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners to order. My name is Cindy Timmons. I am the Chair of the Yumitilla County Board of Commissioners. Our role today is to conduct a public hearing concerning a request to establish new use within exclusive farm use zone properties under the Home Occupations Cottage Industries for a text amendment within the Yumitilla County Development Code by adopting the home occupation language in the Oregon Administrative Rules. I will begin the hearing by asking staff to summarize the application, which Megan has just done. I will then ask the applicant to testify, followed by those in favor of the application. Then, any person in opposition or who have questions or concerns will also have a chance to speak. There is, if there is opposition or questions, staff may respond to them. Commissioners also may ask the staff and witness questions throughout the hearing until the record closes. Any person with an interest in today's agenda may offer relevant oral and/or written testimony, but please only speak when I identify you for that purpose. When you testify, please begin by clearly stating your name and address. If you represent someone else, please say so. If you have any exhibits you want us to consider, such as a copy of your testimony, photographs, petitions, or other documents or physical evidence, please provide it to me or the staff. It will be marked as part of the record. So now I call for any abstentions, bias, conflict of interest, declarations of ex parte contact, or objections to jurisdiction. The following declaration is required to be read prior to the beginning of the hearing. The agenda identifies the applicable antithesis criteria for evaluating the request. Staff will review these criteria. All testimony and evidence must be directed toward these criteria. To raise any issue with sufficient detail to afford the decision-making body, parties, and opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the Land Use Board of Appeals based on that issue. We've already had the staff report. I now call for proponents.
Good morning, Board of Commissioners. Wendy Killington here. I am an attorney. I'm representing the applicant. My address is 4500 Cruzway, Suite 340 in Nicosuico. Thanks for having me here. I'm here to let you know that we fully support the staff decision that's been presented to you and the staff recommendation without any changes. All it does is to simply 100% import the state law rules about home, home occupations into your code to avoid having to fight about that, you know, Luba appeal that was filed by opponents who didn't like the way that you interpreted that state law when you codify this ordinance in the first go-round that went to Luba. What we did is we brought it back and said, let's just codify state law, and then when somebody applies, then you can deal with the site-specific characteristics about how big it is, parking spaces it has, all of those kinds of things. That's the time to have that discussion. It's not now when you're just adopting a code. So we support the amendment as brought to you on reconsideration 100%, and there's really nobody who could object to it because all you're doing is adopting state law. 1,000 Friends still objects, and their objection is, well, your ordinance says that you're authorizing home occupations/cottage industries, and we don't really like the cottage industry thing. But the problem for them with that is that Luba has an express decision from 2023 that points out the legislative history of the home occupation statute. Talked about home occupations and cottage industries as sort of in the same breath, so that's kind of a silly objection. I wouldn't recommend that you go to any trouble and change your ordinance, leave it as it is, it's been that way, and there's just no point in changing it. They also want you to limit parking spaces to 10, and I can't why. What's the point of that? State law doesn't require it. Luba has a decision that, in similar circumstances, said you don't need any sort of a limit like that. Again, if you're going to limit parking or numbers of participants in weddings, think about that in the context of a site-specific application where you're looking at impacts and things like that. It's not the time now to put that into your ordinance. So in all, your staff has done a great job of trying to avoid a big, expensive dust-up at Luba, brought something back to you to adopt state law, let applicants in the county and the U zones apply a state law, allows them to do for home occupations. And I would urge you to approve the proposal exactly as the staff has. Thank you.
Continue again.
Good to see you too.
Thank you.
Any other proponents? Okay, thank you. Call for opponents. Call for comments from public agencies. Call for rebuttal. Did you have something else you wanted to add? Let's see, do we need a request for continuance or to keep the record open?
Me. And for me.
We will now close the hearing and go back into a regular meeting. Delivery and decision.
I would move to adopt staff report.
I would second that and thank them for all their work.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
We also adopt Exhibit E.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Madam Chair, I move that we move to adopt Exhibit E.
Yes.
Into the record as presented.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to adopt Exhibit E into the record. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then we'll go back to the original motion. It's been moved and seconded to adopt staff report. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries.
I'm gonna take official action to adopt the word.
Oh. Ordinance number, is that right there? Yeah. So with that, I would move to adopt ordinance number 2025-09.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, seconded to adopt ordinance number 2025-09. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ordinance passed. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right. According to Dan, we have 90 minutes. Or no, 50.
Fifty. You guys can carry on without me, though, that's for sure.
Oh, no.
Oh, yeah.
One for all and all for one.
Sure.
This says outside.
All right, number two, insurance.
Good morning, Commissioners. Dan Laney, Director of Administrative Services. And today we're talking about renewals of our workman's comp, our property liability insurances. And with me, I have John Anderson from Wheatland Insurance, and he's gonna give a little presentation on that, so I'm gonna give the, I'll give it to him.
Morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, sir.
How are we?
Good, how are you?
Good, we missed you at the conference. Trivia wasn't the same without you.
I, I know, I, you know, I didn't wanna, didn't wanna go up the crowd that easy, so.
I wanna give you the 10,000-foot view of kind of what's going on, and then we can get into the specifics of the renewals. Overall, things look good with your main portion of insurance with CIS insurance. This year, we got a 6.7% decrease, which I haven't been able to give that kind of news in over seven years.
I'm sorry, would you say that one more time?
Yeah, 6.7% decrease. So there's a couple of factors in there, but overall CIS came to its members this year and said 3.4%, which trending back five, seven years, it's been in the teens and twenties. 1,000-foot view is that things are really starting to solid up.
It was the work of the excellent board from CIS.
I think so. Another factor in there, there was a couple of areas that we identified where we were able to review some contracts, where we have an entity working on our behalf that's providing us insurance on their behalf that gives us credits, so we're able to implement some of that with Doug. So we got that on the books, and behind that, too, just a number of changes internally. Major changes that we had, we did at the Midco Bethmore, large piece of equipment, a heli-sprayer for the weed department and all the other changes, like, again, I say, it was 6.7. Out of CIS, we have Cowbell Insurance, who's providing some of our risk coverage for us. In that market, it's a new line of insurance, relatively new line of insurance, and it's competitive. We've got new companies coming in, and so it drove the premium down on that. Dogged last year. Coverage just a.
That's so very important.
Yeah. And so we did a risk analysis on that policy against the, that CIS offers, and again, with the premium and the broader coverage that it will present.
And Cowbell's one that decreased by 5,000?
Yes, sir.
We definitely need more.
So that looks really good. And then the last piece of this presentation would be the workers' compensation, which is with Save Corporation. We didn't have a swing there the other way. The contributing factors to that is payroll is up. Factor in the premium, but we also have clients in this chair, which drives what they call their experience rating credit, and that changed pretty significantly, 0.87 to 0.93. Talking with Dan, and we'll talk with Jennifer, we'll get a meeting going. There's a couple of risk management things that I think we could work with next year, leave the safe, to keep that X mod below. If it goes above one, this thing really starts trending. Really use some risk management tools to keep an eye on those flames.
Is it, I mean, what kind of things can we do to keep it below?
Well, we have a non-disabling claims program through the save. The amount of the claims when they come in, the frequency of claims is a major factor in the X mod. So if we have a claim come in where somebody rolls their ankle and goes to the clinic and gets checked out, and that goes. Instead of putting 10 of those on the books, we can pay those, reimburse the safe for those, therefore bringing down our X mod. Because even a, you know, 26 million in payroll, even a point change in that X mod hits the standard.
Yeah.
So going from 0.87 to 0.93 percent. We take out the frequency portion of them, you know, the smaller, non-disabling ones, closed out, everybody's like, oh, well. Those, we can do an analysis. Pay $50 worth of payments to potential.
Thank you.
We're all, the last thing, Joe, we're looking into potentially putting together a quote with CIS on the auto portion and just ensuring those high-end vehicles. 250,000. Waiting on some more information. So we may have. Dan has all the documents, so we'll need signature data to come out. Yeah. Question? Me?
I don't have any questions. Dan?
No, I, I don't.
Okay. All right, okay. Do you want to make? Oh, go ahead, Dan.
I just was gonna say I, I'd move for approval of the insurance coverage cost of premiums as presented.
Good move and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for the.
Second portion on the, the next piece. It's not, it's for help.
Oh, I, I did it as presented, that didn't work.
You want that one as well included? Okay, we'll make sure in the notes.
Yeah, because it's in the pinky.
Okay. Okay, mass gathering.
Morning again, Megan Dotchessy, Planning Manager. So we received another request for an outdoor mass gathering on properties known as exclusive farm use. They're allowed per development code and per state rules under 152058K. They're required to get a license from the Board of Commissioners. This particular event is gonna be at Delmas Wine District, Rocks District AVA. They want to do a wine and art auction to be held on July 26th, 2025, at the Davis Orchard location on Appleton Road. Be held from 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM with anticipated attendance of about 300 to 400 people, and all parking will be provided on-site. And I believe we have Steve here to speak about his involvement.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. Nice to see you.
Nice to meet you.
I'm Steve Robertson, and I'm the President of Rocks District Wine. Nonprofit that consists of about 34 producers and growers and about 19 trade partners. It's all of eight years old now. It's something that I founded on the backside of gaining the Tax and Trade Bureau approval of the Rocks District of Milton Prewater AVA, which happened 10 years ago. The process to gain that approval started 14 years ago. So I give you that, by way of background, in terms of, in this wine business game, vision is important in terms of where you're going, not getting ahead of yourself, in terms of building culture the right way, first with the participants, the direct participants. It's taken us a decade to kind of build that culture out, get people comfortable with what the Rocks District is all about. And its importance, not just to promote Prewater, but global impact. And to kind of reflect on that year, two weeks ago, Post East Arone, an event out of California, Casa Robles, California, came to Walla Walla Valley on the back of the nation, basically, and their interest in another venue besides Casa Robles. And 135 wineries from around the world, including 35 from France, we had people from South Africa, Australia, that had never been, obviously, to Walla Walla Valley before, but the attraction by way of distinctive product was the Rocks District of Milton Prewater. That's why they were there. That was the entry, that the power of this tiny little place.
So the draw, what I'm hearing is the draw was Yumitilla County, not Walla Walla.
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, that's clear. So, so we decided, on the backside of Post East Arone, this event, supposed to go, I think we're ready now to have our own event, to invite the world. It's gonna start regionally, but eventually the world to come to Prewater and Yumitilla County, to experience what this place is, the people in it. And then there was another aspect to this thing, not just our own selfish business interests, by way of visibility, credibility in the wine industry, but we had recognized that we're, we needed to be more involved in the city of Milton Prewater by way of its health, its whole health, business community, bringing in investment into that town. I went to the new city manager, I think he had about two minutes before I started bothering him, and it's a physician and a superintendent of schools, and sat down with those two gentlemen somewhere ago, and asked them, in their view, what was the city's biggest immediate need? Money. We didn't really have an event at that point, because I wanted to build it around Milton Prewater need. Profit, money needs to go somewhere. So, but then literally, not long, they both said mental health. That was interesting, because I didn't really, I was not educated on what that really was and its impact to the town. So I started to educate myself and recognize it's a destiny. So we then started forming an event around that need with the Milton Prewater School District, Aaron Duff there, and I worked very closely on that in order to derive a portion of the event, where monies, net monies that are raised, go to the Milton Prewater School District for the purpose of mental health and behavioral health services delivered to the students of Prewater, our initial goal. In order to make that level of commitment, you need to have an event that has enough leg and enough attraction that you can repeat it and repeat it and repeat it and repeat it, because the need's not gonna go away. It might morph a little bit, it might. It might morph a little bit, it might be other things that money can be delivered to, but that was the genesis of the idea, how we got there. And working very closely, uh superintendent even last week. Now working on a three to five-year budget in terms of where monies can go, which helps us not just on the net monies from the event itself. But potential grants that we can bring in, sponsorships that we can gain to basically uh buy more money. Because everything's expensive. So we're, we're really happy with what we've been able to uh bridge by way of relationship with the people and the political environment within Milton Prewater itself. We've integrated uh an event with the city that they have the the North Friday Nights on North Main event. And we're gonna do, we're gonna participate in that as Rocks District wine growers. We're gonna be in the kid zone, we're gonna hand out maracas to the kids, we've got a mariachi band that will be strolling about, entertaining people. Just having fun. It's a, it's, you know, it's a free event, it's, we're just gonna participate in the the fun of that Friday evening. The day before, the serious money gathering exercise on on Saturday afternoon. It's barrel tasting, so people don't have to bid on these twenty-five exclusive wine lots that producers have donated. So people can just come and enjoy their time there, they don't need to bid, but for those that wish to bid, there'll be an opportunity to do that, we hope they're generous, that's what we're pushing and. And uh and we'll do it again next year.
Thanks. Sold me. Uh with that, I'm just gonna make the motion to approve the outdoor mass gathering license and authorize commissioner chair to sign.
Second, second, second.
I do have a question. Where's everybody gonna, better gonna park?
Well, um you're familiar with Davis Orchard.
I am.
Davis Orchard was purchased by a company called Walla Walla Land Company. Uh there's a winery in it and they they still apples within their hundred acres, but they also have wine grapes within it uh as well. And the, the old packing shed and cold storage units or apples have been converted into other things. And not in its entirety, because they still do have apples. But that giant parking area in front of that packing shed is parking lot A. And then staff and staff will park around back, there's another, there's plenty of parking.
Okay, I was just curious, so, okay.
And we'll have directional signs that we've got, I mean, I'm a little amazed, really, we have over fifty volunteers. That'd be wearing little Rocks District Masal Bash aprons identifying themselves and they'll be directing people and answering questions. All that kind of thing, and uh so I don't think we're gonna have a moving people.
Yeah, that's a great spot, right? It's been moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, we are gonna move uh number seven, public works purchase. Because.
Good morning, commissioners, Tom Fellows, Public Works Director. So what we, what Public Works has brought before the board today is the purchase of a, a uh piece of equipment from Oregon Surplus Properties. This would be a, a nineteen ninety-one snow blower. I'm sure that the commissioners remember a couple of years ago when we had the huge snow event, uh mostly because the county was pretty much closed down for a number of days. If we would have had this piece of equipment, then we would have. Had the county, at least the county roads portion, uh up and running days before we did, so. This is really a, a pretty good deal. I understand it's a, it's an older piece of equipment, but it has uh very low hours, very low miles. The price is, is certainly right on it and, and it will um certainly assist us. Moving forward in our snow removal capabilities, both up on Tollgate and even uh even up uh in the foothills above Pilot Rock and whatnot, so. We're, we're requesting that the board approve the purchase of this snow blower for twelve thousand five hundred dollars and will, and we will take the mice with it.
I would move, I would move for approval.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Thank you, commissioners. Have a good day.
You do.
Yeah, we're back to item four, burn ban.
Historically, the county has put in a burn ban, sorry, in July one. Few years, um it's before the board again for implementing a burn ban by one, but this will also include agricultural as well as non-agricultural burns. Which is slightly different, normally the agricultural one is. Delayed or sometimes has not been imposed. So the request is to implement uh July one. Areas covered by Yumitala County.
I hate to see the burn ban. But I know it's important. Any discussion?
No, I've had a fire chief already reach out to me and asking for this, um and I've moved to adopt B C C twenty twenty-five to zero two eight.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Elections payable.
Good morning, commissioners, Steve Craven, elections record supervisor. Uh right before you is approval for payable from. The May twentieth election of seven thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents to many mailing services technologies for the. And inserting and transportation to the post office. Into seven thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
Where do we end up with our return rate? It's.
Fourteen point nine four percent.
Oh, you did. It's thirty-six or thirty-fifth?
Thirty-fifth, I believe.
Thirty-fifth, huh? Thirty-six counties.
Moving up.
Yeah. We have nowhere to go, but.
Yeah.
Move to prove and sign the attached payable to B M S Technologies in amount of seven thousand six hundred twenty-eight dollars and fifty-four cents.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. I, I do have a question. Um how did it go yesterday?
Uh the results of the two races did not change. So the machines counted correctly, we did find one name that was Brittany, although wasn't. Still, it's missed, but it did not change the.
Would you mind for the records, explain to what she's referring to?
We have two contests from the May twentieth election that were tied. Kai, Dan, Fire District position number five, Milton Prewater. Ambulance service district position five was tied as well. For Mackay Fire, uh we had two candidates that had four votes and for the Milton Prewater. We have a Prewater ambulance, they had two votes apiece. Uh we are going to be having a tiebreaker next Wednesday at nine A.
What's the tiebreaker? Is that coin toss on the steps or what?
Going to high card, deck of cards.
I'm gonna say it again.
It's by a block. Cutting cards.
Um you're, you're not making this up, are you?
No.
This is okay.
Nope, nope. We're all excited about it.
Is this again?
Nine A M. The election's August.
Oh, it's very popcorn.
Next Wednesday?
Yes.
Okay. Elsie, can you put that on our schedule?
And.
Have you seen this done before?
Yes.
This is.
Yes, it's only going to be for the Mackay. Basically, we certify the results of the outcome from the boat tally machine, that's what happened yesterday with the hand. Now we go on to the next step of the tiebreaker, but we can also weed through and do qualifications before we go to the next step. We do have a candidate in the Milton Prewater Ambulance District that is not qualified, and it was one of the top.
Isn't, doesn't live in the district, kind of?
He does not live in the district, he's not qualified to be a director. So the individual who is qualified is gonna be getting the write-in acceptance form for that. And then the. Fire District will be conducting the.
Hi, that is very interesting.
I do not know who's gonna be shocked, we're not going to be.
I would recommend the board chair.
You're not gonna be there?
I am not.
Oh.
Previously arranged.
Isn't that interesting?
This is so cool. This is the first for me, I will admit.
Thank you. Public health contract position.
Good morning, commissioners. Joe Fumara, Director for Yumitala County Public Health. Um so what we've got, the, the contract is part of our annual contract that comes from Oregon Health Authority with variety of funding streams and programs. One, new one that is in there for this year is the program element seventy-six, uh which is a opt-in piece that we opted into earlier this year. For taking on the inspection role for the tobacco retail licensing program that is licensed and enforced through the state. But we would be picking up some of the inspections that are tied to that, that's the inspections with uh young adults uh under the age of twenty-one attempting to make a purchase uh for tobacco. And then some what they call compliance inspections where inspectors visit and make sure that signage and locations of tobacco products and so forth are, are, are being put up and displayed according to C E law. So as part of this program, uh we, we receive reimbursements after we conduct inspections uh from the licensing fees that the state collects from these retailers. And so we're looking at potential revenue of just over thirty-two thousand dollars. Uh as part of that, we obviously need to have a young adult inspector on staff to be able to make, make those purchase attempts to, to, to sure whether or not. I D. and requirements to not sell tobacco under twenty-one are being met. We would like to have two of these individuals on staff help coordinate inspections with our environmental health inspectors who will be observing these purchase attempts as they happen. These young adults don't go by themselves, they'll be with our environmental health inspectors through that process and. Looking for approval to hire two hourly staff uh for that age range, uh they need to be between eighteen and twenty uh to, to be qualified for this program. We're looking to compensate at a rate of twenty dollars an hour and we don't anticipate it being more than eighty or sixty.
You pick them by like drawing cards or how do you?
Yeah, so uh there's a. Uh not everybody is necessarily comfortable doing something like that. There's a little bit of, they, they need to be willing to do this themselves. Our goal is to uh some local agencies, some of the local colleges, et cetera, to kind of have a. Pipeline, if you will, of folks who are interested in making a few extra dollars uh doing this with us, because obviously folks age out of this program.
Is there any training involved?
There is training, training provided through Oregon Authority, um and then of course training through some of our staff as well.
Other questions?
I second it.
I think this is a great program. Been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye. I, uh, sure, um Adam Chair, I do apologize, but I do have to go, so. Um I hate to leave before the supplemental budgets, but uh my. Thank you, thank you for the consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to number eight, sheriff's office. Software purchase.
See who's there. Is this you? Not you. Oh, yeah, I guess it would be. I don't see her on the call. Would you mind texting her and then uh maybe we could skip that one and go to the next one until we have somebody ready to do this?
Down to number nine, sheriff's office training.
Sorry, I might have been paying attention, I would have looked ahead and saw that.
Morning commissioners. I am here to speak on behalf about the Go Circle renewal for one year. Um we are mandated by our state statute to keep all of our M O ones and recordings for um seven months. We have designated to keep them longer than that. Um are you?
Wait, I think.
So we're doing, yeah, training first.
Yep, that one.
Okay, so sorry. Um stirrings on our way. Uh so backing up, um good morning. Um I'm here to talk about a proposed training, Denise Amberly training, um that we would like to host at Yumitala County Sheriff's Office this year. Um it is uh very intense and beneficial for both patrol and dispatcher alike. It is known worldwide as impactful and extremely detailed for learning lessons by both of those entities. Um I currently have a number of local agencies wanting to attend, which would make the cost less. Cost is currently sixty-five hundred dollars. Um I have committed thirty-six um attendees so far and this is one of those that once I posted to Department of Public Safety and Standards, gonna fill up just like that. Um several of our dispatchers have gone the last couple of years to the conference in February. Um they come back with rave reviews. It is a story about a um gentleman who lost his wife, she was kidnapped and the things that could have and didn't go well and could have been better. But it's not about placing blame, it's about let's fix the issue. I'm, I'm requesting approval. We're looking at doing this in the fall, still have a little bit of time, but um I'm coming to you ahead of time. Because we are um trying to get on their schedule and they are literally a year out with some aspects for the train. Um so I'm looking for approval for the sixty-five hundred dollars for the training.
I have a comment on this.
Sure.
And um I would, I would believe this would be tough to sit through for somebody, somebody like me. I mean, I, I read all the background information and, but I can also see too the benefit. That, like you said, they've turned it to where it's gonna help others, so it doesn't happen, so it doesn't happen to somebody else. And so I um, my hat's off to you and to everybody who attends this and deals with this, because it can't be an easy. Anyway, um just thank you for, for supplying this training.
I. I'd say I think that it's invaluable, but I know, but I know the training is. And, and I think it's a great idea that, you know, we have the facility to host this and I think it's fantastic that you're willing to take on theirs. With that, my little chair, move approval.
Well, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, let's try this again. Um so now I'm here to speak to you about the current um logging recorder warranty for one more year. Um it was purchased back in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, um previous to that as commissioner. And as to the old system called NICE was not nice. You would be in the middle of something and it would just lose everything and literally the call would be gone, so we upgraded it. Um we haven't, we want to have this extension of the warranty for one year um to give us a little time and our partner, which is also Marin County. To research and see what is gonna be the. to give us a little time and our partner, which is also Monroe County, to research and see what is going to be the best fit going forward. The software and hardware is becoming outdated. We definitely don't want to end up where we were with the old system. So that's what we're looking for approval for. The cost is for one year is one, I'm sorry, thirteen thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and eight cents. We have been in talks already with Go Circle. We really, really like the program, it's super easy to use. Our area partners can also access it, not just Monroe County, but also our radio, radio data district. And they're able to add channels or manipulate it however it needs to be, so it's been fantastic. The other component which was purchased way back in the day includes a quality assurance piece. Yes, and Sergeant Laura Sella is amazing, in a word. She has undertaken and already gotten some of the questions and some of that in place. And going forward, that is what we will be using for our QA for our consistency for our new employees as well as those seasoned employees. It also allows us an opportunity to identify if there's a pattern or problem or if they're doing stellar and why is this one employee is doing better? Can they be maybe a mentor for someone else? So that's what I'm requesting for one year, just to kind of give us an idea in case there's something else out there on the market. I have a hard time believing that Go Circle would have someone out there who could provide the services that we are receiving.
I will say that listening to my previous role, when I would listen to calls and make calls for the district attorney's office and it made me better at my job, listening to those calls. And I think the QA piece and having the dispatchers come in and listen to the calls that they took, whether they're good calls or bad calls, either way. I think it's, I think it's made me feel better.
And we, we can email them to them, give them an opportunity to have a conversation with their supervisor about it. Hey, I, I really didn't think I did that bad on this, can you explain why? Or, you know, you did fantastic. You know, it's not always about critiquing what they've done wrong, but also celebrating what they've done right. And, and it's a tough gig.
And there's been times when I've had the public complain about a certain dispatcher, this, they said this and that and the other thing. And then you pull the call, they didn't say any of those things. In fact, it was nine times out of ten, it was just the opposite. But I, I think it protects them, it's kind of like the dispatcher's version of a body cam.
I agree completely, yes.
Chair, I've been approved.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And Stern indicated she's.
Yeah, she sent that to me.
Oh, okay, great.
Payable from the fair is referred to the board due to the dollar amount. This is to. And it's for six thousand one hundred and fifty-three dollars and fourteen.
Rule.
Second, and I, I know as a parent of ex-ivers, like the Bible for a week.
It is. We put it on the trailer of the door going out of the trailer.
It's been moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Fair Board Appointment.
The, uh, vacancy due to the resignation of Mike Houghworth. And the proposal is to move the board elect Jose Garcia into the position. He is the one that has been shadowing Mike and was proposed to move into that position starting next year, but this is moving it up one year. Start immediately. It's a full board.
BCC twenty twenty-five dash zero three zero.
And moved in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. See. Number seven.
Come on up, Kevin.
Hey, I apologize. How you doing this morning?
How are you?
Good. Busy, we're busy though, right? That's normal. I have on the, um, do you want me to just introduce it, Pam?
I have on the proposal for us, this is something that we've talked about in budget hearings and have had conversations about. But this is, this is the time in which I'm coming to ask for approval. But we have a civil software system for my division that is actually for the use of public record requests. It's called, I'm asking for a purchase of Just Foya. I'm going to walk you through just a little bit of the process of how we got there. Public records requests are a required statutory duty of money division. They're also, you know, all over in the news about how we're required to be transparent in this government and give out records requests. But it doesn't just include the meaning of public record requests. It also includes the requests for things like, um, we give a lot of records to other agencies in the course of our business, including for criminal cases. We give a lot of records to the district attorney's office during the course of our business. And requests for nine-one-one calls and for audio calls. And so there, it's a plethora of a lot of different types of records that we deal with on a daily basis. So in the search for a system that can help do that, number one, want to provide better customer service for our constituents and for your constituents and also for the public out there. Because right now the process is cumbersome. It's email or come in or bring us a check and there isn't a way for them to request those things online, which is, as we know, is kind of the standard way of doing business now. We're trying to meet that, but then from the accountability part in my division is we also want to be sure that we're keeping really good records of what we're releasing. Not just that we did release it, but what did that actually look at at the time? And right now we have a system that is pieced together by emails and Excel spreadsheets and physical records and PDFs. And so we're trying to get that all into one place where it's really easy for the public to find what they need and ask us. Really easy for us to track statutorily how we're responding to those and making sure that we're accountable because there's very specific timelines for how we're supposed to do that and what did we release and what can't we release and why couldn't we release it? And so it kind of puts us all, basically helps us administer that and be responsible for what we're doing. So when we went and looked at systems, there is, um, if you look here, the proposal is for a public record system that we went and reviewed and by we, I mean my staff. So all of my staff got together and we went through presentations by different vendors, looked at them. There was, um, I think three of them that they went and actually got to play with for a while, like they let us have access to and let them try and work. And so this is feedback from my staff on how it'll work, but also feedback from me on statutorily will it work for what the requirements are. And then also fiscally, is it responsible? Because you're going to see one here that we looked at that looks good and it's got the bells and whistles, but it's about twice as much expensive as the one that I'm proposing for you. So Just Foya is the system that we selected through this process and the one that we're asking for approval to purchase. The total initial cost is nine thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. I have added some documentation there that shows that that is a reoccurring annual fee that goes up by five percent a year. It's an encryption cost-based system. That includes, um, support and it includes live support from the business hours from eight to eight P.M. on Eastern Standard Time, which actually works really well for us because my office and the record isn't there during the night. So it's not like something like you'd get back three, you need to have that all night. And things that we deal with are not usually, you know, nine-one-one calls where you're responding. It's a, all right, we have a problem with this, we can wait until we talk to tech support in the morning. Does include training, does include go-live tutorials and setup on the website to make sure that the interface with the website works well. Some of the reasons that we picked this system, above the others, one of the biggest things for me was it has unlimited users. You start getting into these software systems and I've, you know, done software systems for a really long time. And so I get really used to the buzzwords and I get really used to the things that make me cringe, like, oh, we can fix anything or anything is customizable and you're like, ugh. That usually means you have to make a lot of decisions and it's not going to be plug and plug and play. And customizable also means that it's not really set to go now. So Just Foya was, um, interesting to me because they did things like, it's not going to cost, you have this many licensing and if you add this one and you add this one, it's going to cost more. It's unlimited users, period. So I can add, so they look at your county, they go, what's the need? And then, um, they give you what their price is immediately. It's the first system I've had in a long time that just says, here's what we cost. It's not, let's see and let's see how much work you do and let's see how much, um, record request you do and see how many users you might need and then we'll have to do a configuration, what that cost would be. They actually can just give it to me, which was nice. They said unlimited users, there's no additional cost. Another one of the really big things with this system is that it is now nationwide. So Just Foya is, so Foya is the federal records request laws under the federal. Um, Oregon has its own records requests, but they kind of mirror Foya and we're still under federal, but Oregon is a little bit more, as, as often happens with state, a little bit more specific on how we release those records. So it's well-known throughout the country, been around since about twenty-fourteen, it's well-established. And so improvement system, that was kind of a big deal. I'll give you with the other ones that we did the comparatives with if you would like, because one we looked at was very new. It is CGIS and HIPAA compliant. CGIS is your FBI criminal security, for criminal justice information. Some of the systems we looked at, although claiming to be, couldn't necessarily prove they were and that's a problem for us. Because we're law enforcement, so we deal with pretty much all CGIS information. And it's very, very well protected and it has to be protected and it puts us at risk if we have anything that could potentially get somebody have access to that information. So very important for that. It also huge for us with this company is that it has unlimited data storage. So a lot of the systems we looked at are like, well, it costs this much for this much storage and this much for this much storage. But when we're talking law enforcement records in particular, you start talking about audio one cameras, you start talking about audio files and you start talking about cell phone dumps and that, that storage starts to skyrocket. And, um, they don't charge for storage, it's unlimited storage. It's, and there's also within, as we are delivering files, there is unlimited the size of file that you can send, which is a huge deal for us too, because a lot of times it's like, well, you can send this size file, but this size file, we don't have the capability. In law enforcement, again, we have large files that we're dealing with when we're releasing things. So it also has audit tracking, which a couple of systems we looked at didn't have that. Obviously auditing is very important for us. We need to know who's releasing and what and what's the timeframe and what conversations did they have, if we made what decisions? Also that we can be transparent and make sure that we are tracking down if an error goes wrong, but also if somebody does something they shouldn't do. Got to be able to investigate those things. So audit tracking was really, really important. Also has built-in encryption communications, which again, sensitive information, has encryptions built into it. Couple of systems didn't have that yet either. And so this system kind of had everything we're looking for that we needed. And we know the future is, audio and video files are going to become huge. The more, the more we see the bodyboard cameras and the requirements for that. And, um, those records requests are going to become more and more common on what we have released versus what right now is pretty limited. Instead of just looking toward the future with that too. You'd like me to do the comparators on the systems we looked at or can I, you have any questions?
I'm good.
No, I just, I have a question. This here budget line item and it gives where that is. So this was budgeted for.
Yeah, I have a list on the second page of those kind of things, but yes, so this is, we came before the budget committee in the hearings and said, hey, we want to go out and we want to look for this. This is about the amount we think it's going to cost. And then it was approved at that point. So it's, it is budgeted for. Budgeted going into the next year.
You, you mentioned it and I'm sure it does, that's one of. Does talk to REMS and does REMS, is REMS okay with it, talking to REMS?
It won't interface with REMS and we don't want it to, because nothing that we pull is going to pull directly from REMS. We'll pull it and then push it in as a PDF into that system.
Okay.
So, and it's not just REMS that we're pulling from, right? We're pulling from all different things, but no, it won't interface and, and we don't want it.
Okay.
It will however, I'm careful to promise more than I can deliver. System also encourages me because there is unlimited users. It has, and I look at it like Eugene PD is currently using them, I think Russian PD is probably using them. I've looked at websites that are using them and how they're using them. It has the ability to do different types of request forms that can be then directed to different administrative users. So like for instance with Doug, Doug in my division, Doug will get records requests that are for police requests that are for county. And people don't know the difference because they're just trying to request. In this system, we could set it up where it pushes it over to Doug or who, or another county department that has that ability and vice versa. So it could be spread out beyond just the sheriff's office, which was very appealing. So, and again, the no additional users is like, and to give you that for that.
Well, the limited users is cool, but I mean, I'm assuming you're going to limit the ability to.
Oh, for sure, yeah. It just means that if, you know, my division grows or if we expand it out and add people like Doug or anyone else that wants to, you know, be able to use it, then it's something that costs.
I move approval.
I've moved in second and all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you.
But I was like, good morning. Have a good day.
Okay, supplemental budgets.
Morning Commissioners, Robert Paul, Evantila County CFO. There are two supplemental budgets for you to consider this morning.
Hey, we will move out of our regular meeting into a public hearing. The meeting is now open to the floor for public comment on supplemental budgets.
As a staff report, I will summarize the two supplemental budgets you have to consider. First budget is budget order twenty twenty-five dash seventy-two for the Treatment Courts Grant Program. Requires supplemental budget to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of this budget. Requires an increase in state revenue of eighty-five thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of eighty-five thousand dollars. And budget order twenty twenty-five dash seventy-three, facilities improvement. Supplemental budget to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in local revenue, revenue of three hundred thousand dollars and an increase in capital outlay of three hundred thousand dollars.
Okay. Are there any questions, comments? All right, we will move out of the public hearing and back to our regular meeting. So any discussion?
I'd move to, I'm sorry. I'd move to adopt budget order twenty twenty-five dash seven-two.
Second, been moved in second and all in favor say aye.
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 I've moved approval of budget order twenty twenty-five dash seventy-three.
Second, it's been moved in seconded, all in favor say aye. Motion passed.
First side account? Or budget transfers?
I know why you skipped it, but you can't.
Okay, here we go. I'm sorry.
No, no worries. Staff report for the appropriations transfers that will be required for the budget. There are fifteen, I will summarize them. Budget order twenty twenty-five dash seventy-four for the Community Corrections Program. Requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in capital outlay of one hundred thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of one hundred thousand dollars. Budget order twenty twenty-five dash seventy-five, General Fund Board of Commissioners. Requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of sixty-five thousand dollars, decrease in contingency of sixty-five thousand dollars. Twenty twenty-five dash seventy-six, um, the General Fund CIS Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personnel services of ten thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of ten thousand dollars. Budget order twenty twenty-five dash seventy-seven, General Fund Health Department. Requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of thirty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of thirty thousand dollars. Budget order twenty twenty-five dash seventy-eight, Parks Program. Requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in personal, personnel services of ten thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of ten thousand dollars. Budget order twenty twenty-five dash seventy-nine, the Justice Reinvestment Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate. transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of fifty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of fifty thousand dollars. Budget order 2025 dash eighty, Weed Control Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in personnel services of thirty thousand dollars and an increase in materials and services of thirty thousand dollars. Budget order 2025 dash eighty-one, the County Fair Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of forty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of forty thousand dollars. Budget order 2025 dash eighty-two, Victims Conference Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires the increase in materials and services of ten thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of ten thousand dollars. Budget order 2025 dash eighty-three, Purchases Management Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of nine thousand four hundred fifty dollars, a decrease in capital outlay of ten thousand dollars and an increase in contingency of five hundred fifty dollars. Budget order 2025 dash eighty-four, Care Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of seventy thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of seventy thousand dollars. Budget order 2025 dash eighty-five, the Wellness Hubs Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of twenty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of twenty thousand dollars. Budget order 2025 dash eighty-six, the Developmental Disabilities Program requires budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires the increase in materials and services of one hundred twenty thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of one hundred twenty thousand dollars. Budget order 2025 dash eighty-seven, the Full Exposed Property Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires a decrease in materials and services of ten thousand dollars and an increase in transfers out of ten thousand dollars. Budget order 2025 dash eighty-eight, Economic Development Program requires a budget transfer to appropriate funding, not known at the adoption of the budget. This requires an increase in materials and services of two hundred thousand dollars and a decrease in contingency of two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes, any discussion?
Chair, I'd move to adopt budget order 2025 dash seventy-four.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye. Approval of budget order 2025 dash seventy-five.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash seventy-six.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash seventy-seven.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash seventy-eight.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash seventy-nine.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash eighty.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash eighty-one.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash eighty-two.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash eighty-three.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash eighty-four.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash eighty-five.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash eighty-six.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash seventy-seven.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Approval of budget order 2025 dash eighty-eight.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Let's see, PERS side account.
Commissioners, as you're aware, the Public Employment Retirement System for the, for Umatilla County saw had an unfunded actuary liability with PERS for years. We sometimes have the opportunity to pay a portion of that, to amortize part of that bill. There's a program with the, with the state currently that if we make a deposit for that purpose, a five percent of it to a certain level, the application deadline for that will be July first. I would like authorization to pursue that application process. The funding would need to be available in March of twenty-six, but I believe that we have the opportunity to receive a match from the state of approximately four hundred and eighty thousand dollars, which would help go to offset part of our first. It's an opportunity that I hadn't seen before, but certainly would be beneficial.
Oh, yeah. Goodness. Okay, aye.
I've already had this discussion with Robert and I completely agree. I think it's a great idea. In fact, I would move approval for that.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
That's wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair Campbell.
Yes, good morning Commissioners, this is Jennifer Blake, HR Director. And what's before you today is the renewal of our Lexapro policy system. It's before you because of the cost of the renewal, but this is budgeted in the HR budget at, and the cost this year is eight thousand seven hundred fifty-three dollars and sixty-six cents.
I would move approval for payment.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye. Thank you. Fee ordinance amendment. Okay, we're now moving into a public hearing. The meeting is now open to the floor for the public comment on comprehensive fee ordinance amendments.
This is the second reading for the proposed changes to the ordinance. The first one was held June fourth. There have not been any additional fees since the first reading, so primarily it is for the two departments. The Department of Taxation and GIS Division are changing their amounts and periods and then the other portion is for.
Are there any comments from the public? Then close the public hearing, back for our regular meeting. Any questions or comments?
I would move to adopt ordinance number 2025 dash zero-seven.
Second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Board meeting schedule.
There are three board meetings that are coming up in the future that is requested to change. The first one is due to the County Fair in August. The first meeting is scheduled on August six, during the fair week. And the proposals, we moved it back one week, up one week to August fifteenth. The AOC conference in November, as usual, it's been changed. The second board meeting, and the proposals, to the November twenty-fifth, which is the Monday of Thanksgiving week. And then the last one is the first board meeting in December due to a vacation, requesting that it be moved to December ten.
I would move approval on all those schedules as presented.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Adams B P grants.
The Adams Community Benefits Plan Committee met and came back with approval of a recommendation for a grant for the city of Athena, Adams. And they have done most of the work already and it's definitely a major for, you know.
I think this is wonderful. I mean, they stockpiled money and will use it for, I think it's great. I move to approve grant and adopt order number BCC twenty twenty-five dash zero two.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Letter of support.
Hey, there are a couple of letter supports that are being requested. The first one is to provide a letter of support for, to the Army Corps of Engineers for funding of the Walla Walla River GI study. This is just a letter of support, it's not any type of financial commitment. It's just to request that, the funding for it.
Are the tribes in favor of that?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think they actually, it was mostly a consultant.
With that, then I would move approval of a letter and authorize chair to sign.
Second, it's been moved and seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Question? EEO DC letters.
Hey, this letter of support is to go to the state of Oregon to allow basically the change in border boundaries between two economic development districts. GEO DC currently covers seven counties, including Gillum County and Gillum County would like to move to the Mid Columbia district. There are currently three Oregon counties with that and two Washington counties, primarily because they felt Gillum County divisions are sursing with the Mid Columbia and two eastern Oregon.
I move approval and authorize chair to sign.
Okay, second. I thought this was very interesting, just the whole background information. It moved in seconded, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. A letter in opposition.
This is coming for the board in opposition to House Bill twenty-seven twenty-five. It's being led by Moore County. They drafted up a letter that they don't have all of the counties, impacted counties, sign that supports, would be the impacted.
I've heard from other counties that were requested to sign this letter from Moore County and they're taking it up either today or they must. I move to approve the letter to oppose and authorize chair to sign.
And I agree, I, once again, this was, this was a very interesting reading, the background on it and, so I second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I think that's, thank you.
Is there any, any comments, go to the order?
Yeah, I've got, so it's going to take me about fifty minutes to get through them, so.
You know what?
No, I really do have one.
Okay.
I do want to congratulate three of our department heads for completing the Proud River Leadership Academy. We had Jennifer Flake, our HR Director, Dale Permer from Community Corrections Director, and Rachel Reynolds, Reynolds, our assessor from A and T. They completed a nine-month course and it was called the Proud River Leadership Academy. It was led by Josh Burns out of Hermiston. He did a phenomenal job and I couldn't be more proud of our three graduates. They, they did a lot of hard work. I got to hear some of the things they got to do, they, they had to do and they had a slide presentation. I mean, they, they were picking up trash in the side of the road and brought Dale Permer back to his days as the work crew supervisor. So, I mean, they, they did all kinds of things and they got to go see some really good things in our, in that part of the county and in other parts of the county too. They toured the drone range up here, they got to Good Shepherd Hospital, among others. And, and UEC, UEC Electric Co-op was one of the forces behind it. So kudos to the three of them and the program itself, but that was very well done.
They actually toured the courthouse one day.
Yeah.
And Mr. Dorn and I spoke to them. It was just very, very interesting, all the great things that they were going to get to do, so.
Yeah, it was a really good class and, and so we need to be looking out for other people to go attend that course. So it was, I think it was worth, worth the effort and certainly worth the investment.
Okay, with that, meeting adjourned.